I'd like to call to order the City of Apache Junction Council Meeting for June 6, 2023, to order and ask everyone to put their phones into silence. The invocation will be led by Councilman Peter Heck and the pledge will be by Vice Mayor Robert Schroeder.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity and privilege to gather and discuss city business. We ask that you give staff and council wisdom and clarity in their decision-making. We ask your blessing on our military service men and women who serve around the globe. We remember today those brave members of our military who stormed the beach at Normandy this day seventy-nine years ago. We thank you for their service and sacrifice on this day. We ask as well for your blessing on our first responders, including our police and fire departments and our EMS personnel. We are grateful for their service and ask for their continued safety. Thank you for the privilege we have to serve the residents of this great city. These things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Cross?
Here.
Councilmember Heck?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Nessar?
Present.
Councilmember Soller?
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor.
Okay, I'm gonna make a quick apology. Still fighting this wonderful cold, so if I start coughing, you'll understand why. I feel great, but unfortunately, my voice is not fully returned. Okay, Consent Agenda. As a reminder, all items under Consent Agenda will be approved with one motion. If a council member wishes to remove an item for further discussion, the requests will be made prior to approving the Consent Agenda and will be moved to new business. Do I have a motion for the Consent Agenda?
Runner?
I move that the Consent Agenda be accepted and approved as presented.
Second.
Moved in second. And roll call?
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, awards and presentations and proclamations. We're gonna present the certificates of graduation for the 2023 class of the Citizen Leadership Institute. Mr. Al?
Yes, it is. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Al Bravo, Public Information Officer for the City of Apache Junction. But this, of course, is one of my favorite nights of the year because I get to introduce to you some of the future leaders of our community, some who already are in leadership roles and ones who we will continue to see representing our community very, very well. And who knows, maybe I'll address them just like I'm addressing you this very, very evening. So this is the night we get to acknowledge our graduates of the latest class of the Citizens Citizen Leadership Institute. From January to April or so, every year, we try to put together a class where folks can really learn a little bit more in detail about the different areas of the city and how the city works, from budget to police to libraries to parks and everything in between. And it is a wonderful way for folks to really get a good understanding of municipal government and, of course, their particular municipal government. And also a little bit more as we also bring in folks from the Chamber of Commerce as well as from our nonprofits. So they really get to learn a lot about Apache Junction because a lot of them have some interest in wanting to serve this community in different ways. Some may end up in formal positions like our boards and commissions, but they also might end up working in a nonprofit or in any number of other areas. So it is a great way for anyone who is interested in wanting to serve and certainly wanting to learn more about their city. They can do so with the CLI class every year. Like I said, goes from January pretty much to April. It's an eight-class series. We'll open up the registrations for the next class probably around October, so watch for that. If you have anybody who would like to learn more, they can always contact me. So what we get to do tonight is I get to, this is why, this is my one night, a little out of uniform, so I can show off the latest version of the CLI polo shirt. I am going to call up all of our graduates here with a certificate to hand to them and then we will do a group picture with the mayor and council up here in front. So it is my great pleasure to present to you the class of twenty-three of the Citizens Leadership Institute. Tinker Gertis.
Come on down.
Yes, please stay up.
Come on down here.
Naomi Nations. Jessica Farley. Elliot Anuda, our own. Holly Cray. Eric Ariola. Jody Dutra. Barbara Fitzgerald. Yvonne Cruiser. Sandy Myklin. Catherine Meek. Betty Pie. Yvonne Taroc. Angela Smithson, if you don't believe she could make it tonight. Joan Malm. George Martinez. And last, and certainly not least, John Ponyo. Ladies and gentlemen, the Citizen Leadership Institute Class of 2023.
Hey, Al. Al, do you want us to just stand up back there? Now?
That'd be great.
Do you want us to just stand up back there?
Get closer.
So it tries to leave the crowd and down there.
Let the mayor in there.
Yeah.
Come on, Joe, get with it.
Little people. Hey, John, it took you long enough to take this class.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Big class.
We used to always have big classes. Used to have like thirty to forty people. Then they'd almost die off.
We got nothing back then.
It's now getting back.
Or starting to take more of an interest. That's a good thing.
Have you ever taken? You get to sit there and the people come and they tell about what all they do.
Okay. Regional intergovernmental updates. Anyone on the council have anything?
No, sir.
Okay, I've got a few things that I have to address. Well, this one is a, I had a meeting with Senator Kelly and the Secretary of Energy, Jennifer Glenn Hung, at, and this is at a battery facilities in Gilbert. At, what they're doing is they're taking all the rechargeable batteries and breaking them down to the individual components. And they call it urban mining, which is a new word that I had not heard before. They are, excuse me, they are currently the largest producer of the materials to make your rechargeable batteries in the, in the nation right now. And that includes mining. And so they are very active and very involved in some expansions. And they invited us from the East Valley of mayors to sit down and talk with them and understand what's going on. Unfortunately, I couldn't do a tour because you had to go through a special, let's say briefing and what you can breathe and what you can't breathe. So we missed out on that. And of course, I was still fighting my wonderful cold, too. The drop zone was put on by Congressman Andy Biggs. It was something that I thought was very unique that, you know, if it does happen again next year, and they're already talking about doing it, if you're a veteran or related to a veteran, definitely go out there. And they had probably over a hundred different organizations there that were present to help veterans in doing different things. And it was very impressive as to the number of groups that were there and the different things that they can do, from healthcare to whatever. It was very unique in the aspect on it. And then for even including the spouses of a veteran, some of the things that they can get involved in and helped out with during this entire time. So if it comes up next year, I'd encourage everybody to attend and get, get the information that you may need. The monument, we went through and did some wonderful planning of some new growth. And you can see the, the cactus sitting behind it. This is the North Monument on eighty-eight. And they've done some planning, some of the native, I'll say, trees and bushes, et cetera, in the area. And these were some of the people that were definitely highly involved in getting some of the things done. And of course, the cactus came from the area of expansion for our multi-generation center. They were able to move them. And as you can see, they even still had some blossoms on them. And the other thing I'm gonna talk briefly about is I attended the Apache Junction High School graduation. Mind you, I was not excited at some of those kids out there, out there for graduating and showing their excitement. But I did speak a little bit and it was unique in the aspect of seeing we, all these kids as they're moving on forward to the different things that they have forward in their lives. Okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
Just real quick, me and Councilmember Cross went to the East Valley Cities and Towns Dinner. And it was a great networking chance with other cities, but they really went into the water issue and the agreement between California, Nevada, and Arizona. So it was really a good, good thing that we were there and we got to learn a lot about it. So just wanted to let you know, we went there for that.
Okay. Excuse me, City Managers Report.
Thank you, Your Honor, Bryant Powell, City Manager. We have a few items I'd like to report on, some of the going-ons at the city staff level. We have Al, the next, all right, let's do that one first. Today was our first-ever Level Up Your Business Effective Marketing and Social Media Presence. We're honored that two of our staff members of the four were asked to come and be part of a business panel to speak on some of the ways we can improve in our community through the chamber, effective marketing through social media. So Reyna, who is a member of the Public Information Team over at Public Safety, and Jorge Gutierrez, who's our digital communication specialist, were asked. And we just wanted to share that and it was a really great event. Heard they had great attendance, over forty folks came and, and had a good, good, good learning experience. All right, so this one is Apache Junction Public Library Kindness Carnival and Summer Reading Kickoff. It's our kickoff event. We had a library gate account, gate count of seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven in the morning of this event. Last year, we had one hundred. And this, we also enrolled five-hundred-and-ninety-one youth for summer reading program. We are utilizing more effectively the social media as this event was shared over seventy times in the community. Supercision Fire and Medical and AJPD and Apache Junction Head Start partnered with the library event. Kids were able to look at the fire truck. Police gave out child and children IDs and had to turn people away. They were so busy. The yard sign there was inspired by our staff attendance there and was funded through a youth services grant. We were not expecting this turnout, but one of the neat things is the staff shared was that popcorn was shared all throughout the library and was just a fun event and the library got to smell like popcorn all over. Wanted to share also another tour, very gracious, the folks over at ASU Poly. So some innovative efforts in reducing and reusing plastic is a pilot. I call it a incubator. They call it a little area over at ASU Poly where they're able to take plastics, all kinds of plastic, plastic bins, political signs, right, Mayor? And put them in and they kind of break up and then they are able to essentially melt them. And they are able to now create benches and really cool skateboards. And they're looking at all kinds of molds and then to scale this effort. Over the next several months, we're gonna be watching as ASU is gonna move this operation from ASU Poly to downtown. And the mayor and I and Liz Legenbach were able, able to attend. And then they're working with Goodwill of Arizona to be kind of a supplier of the plastic, those plastics that come in, that people bring in the bins. And then the supplies are able to be sold. Instead of going to landfill, they can get this over to, as from a supply side to this operation. We are interested and Liz is there because if we can use some of our plastic, we have co-compliance signs that get left behind throughout the city. Our co-compliance officers gather those up, collect those. And so we're gonna be watching this and see if there is a way. Liz said some of these bench was very sturdy and could be a way to utilize it in a park. So we're just kind of exploring that and that partnership there. So I don't know, Mayor, if there's anything else you want to add? That's kind of my portion of the report on this one.
On the benches and also you see the top of a, like a trash container over there. They are made primarily from political signs. And they're wanting to get as many as they can. And of course, I've got several that I've accumulated over the years. And I've told them I'd be willing to take them to their new facilities that they're setting up right now to shred them down, to be able to make some benches and some, I'll say, holders for trash and other things in this area. And it is something that, I like the idea of being able to use them for something other than trying to roll them up and put them into a trash can and watch the dump, dump trucks. So the garbage truck trying to get it out of the garbage can because it's stuck in there. And so that is something that I think is a good use of the opportunities for us.
That concludes my part, Al. I'll turn it to you.
Very good. Once again, good evening to you all. Mayor, members of the City Council, Al Bravo, Public Information Officer for the city. Couple of announcements to make sure you're aware of and our audience, of course, out there. Just because it's a hundred degrees doesn't mean the parks isn't very, very busy with plenty of stuff going on. So this is a little glimpse at some of the stuff going on in the month of June. And then even more fun coming in July. As always, we have the return of fireworks at Supercision Shadows Park on Southern, just east of Ironwood. You can look on our homepage for all the details, but remember that we're gonna be out there, probably around six o'clock is when we'll open the gates. And the fireworks show should go, go off around eight-thirty. So watch for lots more information, making sure you're safe and get in and out of the area well on July 4th. So watch for that, too. All this stuff, remember, is on the homepage, very, very important. Summertime also means Shop Local. I always like to try to remind everybody, we did our event with the Chamber of Commerce today. They are very, very supportive of our local businesses. This is one way you can do it. Go to the Chamber's website, ajchamber.com. You can learn all about the discounts with Shop Local. Remember, everything not only is on the website, but also in our newsletter. You can sign up for that. It comes out every Thursday. Those are your announcements for June 6, 2023.
Thank you. Okay, public hearings. An application for a Class B bingo license for the Fraternal Order of Eagles Auxiliary, thirty-eight fifty. Jennifer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Before council this evening is a Class B bingo license for the Fraternal Order of Eagles Auxiliary, thirty-eight fifty. This was sent to the Planning Department, Building and Safety, Police Department, and Fire. They have all performed their safety and zoning inspections. They have all come back with no objections to approving, recommending approval to the Department of Revenue, the application. The applicant is here this evening. If you do have any questions. And I have no further comments on the application.
Would the applicant like to speak on this at all?
Hi, Mayor. I voted for you.
Thank you.
We have a wonderful opportunity here and I just wanna run by donations. We are totally nonprofit organization. Our workers don't even get paid. We volunteer. There's no payroll at all in our facility. I wanted to know, in two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two, we donated thirty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty-seven cents. And that's quite a bit of money considering we only have three hundred plus auxiliary. And this year, we donated twenty-four thousand eight hundred, a little low, but we gave, we also work the gate at the rodeo for Lost Dutchman Days and we've done it for years. Julie Hewitt gets the workers. And last year, we got eight thousand dollars. Four thousand went to the area and four thousand went to the auxiliary. And we took our four thousand and gave it to AJ Youth Genesis Two Thousand and Project Help. We try to keep all our money locally as much as possible, other than the grand, like diabetes, Parkinson's and that stuff usually goes mostly to Phoenix area, Phoenix Children's Heart. And it's a very good cause and we just bought the building behind us. So the auxiliary wants to help build that up. And our big project, when it gets going, is we wanna tear that fence down and make a beautiful landscaping in the front. Hopefully, no car will knock it down, but right there on Southern. But we'd appreciate your support and help.
Thank you. Okay, we're doing a motion on this one? Yep, or public, okay. Is anyone in the public like to speak on this matter at all? Seeing no movement, do I have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I moved that the application for a Class B bingo license for the Fraternal Order of Eagles Auxiliary, thirty-eight fifty, be recommended for approval.
Second.
Moved in second. And roll call?
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Application for Class A bingo license for the Jay Allen Minority Tumbleweed Bar and Grill located at seventy-five twenty-five West Apache Trail. Jennifer?
Thank you, Your Honor. So this will probably be the first for this council to see an application for a restaurant, bar, or grill. In conversations with the Department of Revenue, they are starting to see more restaurants apply for these. So this is new for Arizona, pretty much. The Class A license will be held by Jay McQuarter. It is for the Tumbleweed Bar and Grill. What I do want to mention is the application before council tonight has been amended as of today. They are requesting a change in the days that they hold the bingo to only two days a week. That would be a Monday and a Tuesday. Anytime a bingo license or a bingo game is canceled, notification to the Department of Revenue has to happen immediately and they have to state why the game was canceled. So when you're dealing with gambling, the, the rules and regulations are very strict. So also, sorry, that's on my next one. So I do have their amended application and I would request that if council, when they make their motion to state that there is an amended application for only holding bingo Monday and Tuesday night. Of course, this went to Planning Department, Building and Safety, Police Department, and Fire. They also have no objections to you recommending approval to the Department of Revenue for the Class A license. The application did mention they would, applicant mentioned they would be here this evening if you had any further questions. And this is for a public hearing.
Would the applicant like to say something? Can't hear her.
Only if there's any questions.
Okay. Anyone have any questions up here? No? Okay, this is a, excuse me, a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? I see no movement, so can I have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I moved that the amended application for the Class A bingo license for Tumbleweed Bar and Grill located at seven twenty-five West Apache Trail, number two A, for Monday and Tuesday nights be approved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Roll call?
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Application for a Series Seven Beer and Wine License for Cat Wagon Tap and Bottle located at twenty-four thirty West Apache Trail, number four. Jennifer?
Thank you, Your Honor. So this is, of course, for a Series Seven Beer and Wine. The Planning Department, Building and Zoning Department, Police, and Fire have done their safety inspections. For this application, Development Services Director Rudy Esquivias did say that they have pulled a permit for remodeling improvement plans for this area, for this building. The use of the building and their liquor license cannot begin until the plans are reviewed, approved, and a permit is issued. Subsequent to passing inspections, they will issue a certificate of occupancy. they will issue a certificate of occupancy, at which time the proprietor can then begin use of the building. And once the state issues their department, the liquor license, then they can begin selling liquor. All of the departments have no other comments, and all are recommending approval. And the applicant is here this evening.
Okay, would the applicant like to speak on this?
So same thing, if you have any questions for him, he'll come up.
Anyone up here have any questions for him?
No.
No.
Don't see any. Okay, this is a public hearing. Does anyone like to speak on this matter? And again, I see no movement, so can I have a motion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I moved that the application for a Series 7 beer and wine liquor license for cat wagon tap and bottle located at 2430 East West, I'm sorry, Apache Trail, number four be recommended for approval.
Second.
Got it.
Moved and seconded.
Councilmember Heck.
Yes.
Councilmember Cross.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder.
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Soller.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, no old business, new business. Ratification for the purchase of a 2023 Ford F-250 to replace the 30-239 2005 Ford 150. Ted.
Good evening, Mayor, council people. We had a recent fire with one of our vehicles, and it was a total loss. And we had to replace it. It's an emergency vehicle for our operations. And we went ahead and purchased it, and we'd like ratification of the purchase of the vehicle.
Okay, any questions from this council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Ted, the 2023 Ford F-250 doesn't cost $60,000. Were there some proceeds from insurance on the other one? Because I would think an F-250 would be probably closer to like $80,000 or $85,000. Was it, or is it because of that, the Arizona Cooperative?
It was the Arizona Cooperative. The vehicle itself was about $48,000, I believe, but we had to put a service body on it. And that brought it up to about $60,000.
Man, can I buy a vehicle that way?
Yeah, use the bid, yes. No.
And also, why, why did the truck catch fire?
We don't know. We think it was electrical fire. Luckily, no one was injured, but it was a total loss. It happened on Ironwood right by the high school.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. Anyone else?
He asked the question I was asking.
I have a curiosity question. They already bought it. What if we don't ratify it?
Joel?
Just curious. I just really.
It's appropriate.
This would make it official that the expenditure was legal. So you should, I recommend you ratify it.
He doesn't want to pay for it, is what he said.
Yeah.
Somebody needs to go get that horse.
Anyone else?
Pass the hat.
Okay, can I have a motion to ratify the purchase? Yes.
I move to ratify the purchase of a 2023 Ford F-250 with royal service back to replace 30-329 a Ford 2005 Ford F-150 XL using the State of Arizona Cooperative contract number CTR059323 in the amount not to exceed $60,213.89.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Cross.
Yes.
Councilmember Heck.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder.
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser.
Yes.
Councilmember Soller.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Excuse me. I apologize again for that. Discussion and consideration and allowing.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'd like to be excused from this for, don't want there to be any perceived bias.
Okay, thank you. Discussion and consideration allowing Hitching Post to host a one-time rough stock and mutton busting event on Saturday, June 17th. Daryl.
Yeah, this is, so the Copper State Rodeos approached me, the city, and requesting to have a special event and trying to do a fundraising utilizing the Arizona Junior Bull Riders and utilizing the Hitching Post Saloon for this event because of the relationship with that business. And it has been pointed out that it is a kind of an issue with the existing development agreement that's in place. And it should be noted that the city, at one point in time, did approve having special events. However, it is in conflict, a conflict with the development agreement. That being said, I would invite Stacy Reichwell with Copper State Rodeo to come up and just give a few words as to what they're actually doing and why they're doing it.
Hello, thank you for having me. So I represent Copper State Rodeo Company and SJBRA, which is the Southern Junior Bull Riding Association. We have kids from the ages of four to 18 that compete in this nonprofit organization. They go all over the state, and they ride for national titles, as well as they go into Texas, Oklahoma, and areas like that. And they represent not only the state of Arizona, but the town of Apache Junction is because this is where they ride. We host these events once a month, have for a couple of years now. My son was a part of it. He's actually been honored for being a state championship in junior high. He brought home the state championship to Apache Junction, where the council honored him for that. And it's programs like this that these kids need in order to go. So we, the next event is for June 17th, and we're just asking that we can get until they can go back and get the developmental agreement with the Hitching Post fixed, if we can go ahead and proceed with an evening bull riding just for June until we can clarify that.
Mayor.
Yes.
You want to use the rodeo grounds, correct?
Well, it was brought to my attention. I received an email saying that that was an option. If I can get like a confirmation that that is a for-sure thing, we would totally be okay with moving it over there. But if not, because, I mean, these kids, like everybody, or some of the participants come in from Colorado, Utah, New Mexico. We have riders from all over. So we just kind of have to have it confirmed so the parents.
Let me ask, let me ask the city manager, did we confirm this?
So let's have Jamie come up and make sure, I think that we'd love, is Jamie here?
Yes.
I think Jamie is here, yeah, from Parks and Rec. We're in the process of connecting these, these folks up. So Jamie, I'll turn it to you.
Good evening, council. We do, and we have tentatively blocked out the rodeo grounds for June 17th. We do have our archery program that is out there. So depending on the needs, we feel that it is shareable space. They don't, they won't need the rodeo grounds. They use the large space to the east of it. So we think that we can work this out to meet the needs.
Can this also be done at an earlier time than what was asked for on the agenda for tonight? They originally had 5:00 PM to 7:45 PM. However, that was having it at the Hitching Post because right after that, they acquiesce and roll right into doing bull riding. So if they could hold it maybe in the morning to where that gives them time to move the stock, the animals, over to the Hitching Post for the night's events.
So again, without knowing all of their complete needs, I have tentatively booked out the road, and not knowing the times, I tentatively booked out the rodeo grounds from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. So if you guys are outside of that, those are some early risers for kids.
It is one.
But again, without knowing like how many people and cars and all that kind of stuff, but I think that we can work through those logistics to come to something. I'm happy to work with Stacy on this special event permit and expedite that process so we can get, we've already given a heads up to our PD and our Fire, our Special Event Committee, that this could be happening. The biggest thing is that we don't actually hold the deed yet to the rodeo grounds from the BLM, so it has to be done under a nonprofit. And we would have to have a certificate of insurance naming the city as additional insured. Those are the two biggest hurdles. The third would be becoming or having your nonprofit registered with the city clerk's office. Again, we've had that conversation. That can be done before this June 17th date.
So, Your Honor, Jamie, can we work this with these folks to kind of help through that process? There's about four things there, Stacy, that we can, I saw your eyes go, oh no. We'll have to work through it, yeah.
And those are all things that we've, you know, communicated. So I think that it's just a matter of putting pen to paper.
And on the renting of the property, we made a mistake.
We did.
So we should cover the cost.
We are happy to cover the cost for the June 17th. If this is going to be an ongoing and a monthly, which I think the rodeo ground serves a great purpose for that. We do have a youth-serving nonprofit rate that is pretty reasonable. But for June, we will waive all the fees needed to make this event happen there.
Thank you. It was our, we did, Councilmember Soller, we did send that email. It's a mistake.
Yes.
If not for future events, but for at least this first one, could they use or run this operation under the Friends of AJ as a nonprofit?
That would be a question for Friends of AJ, but depending on what their charter is and their code is, I don't think it probably covers rodeos. But I don't know. That's a legal question. I'm just.
Yeah, we'll look at that.
Stacy, you're, the Arizona Junior Bull Riders is a 501(c)(3)?
Yes.
Is Copper State as well?
Well, Copper State is.
Copper State is not, but this is going all through Arizona Junior Bull Riders. Okay. So we have the 501 covered.
Okay.
It should be on file. I did send all that stuff over.
Okay.
Mayor, I just wanted to say, I'm glad you brought that to our attention a few weeks ago, and I'm glad we're getting it resolved so these kids can have some fun and do what they love to do. It's a great organization. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Definitely let us know the time so we can attend.
Your Honor.
Yes.
While we're on this topic here and how we led to this, this point, I would like to open up to bring to council the development agreement for the Hitching Post to explore the possibilities of adding special events to their agreement. A handful to be determined by the council over the course of a year, but I would like to see that come, come in front of us.
We're on it, and I, unless there's any objections, some head nods, we're, we can take it from there.
Direction to staff.
You want us to bring it back in two weeks for direction to staff? Or, okay.
Bring it back in two weeks so that we can actually discuss it.
It could be, or I could just start working it. We could bring it back in two weeks and have a formal direction to staff, but I don't know if Joel necessarily we need it. I mean, we've got a process we're working. Okay. Seems like everybody, in terms of the, the direction Councilmember Cross would just be to get staff working on it, we could use those two weeks to start working it, if we needed a little bit more time.
Can we have stuff put in place to where we can have resolution by July, middle of July?
So we're third and fourth on our council meetings, and the mayor, so we would have to, that's a great one. We'd have to hustle and hustle that. So maybe July, second meeting, set of meetings in July is.
Second meeting in July.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know when that is. It's.
19 and 20.
Is that soon enough for 17th and 18th? So a work session on 17th with a possible review and.
That should be fine.
Okay, yeah.
We need to put this on any special fast track. We just want to start exploring this.
Start exploring.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Okay, this is on the agenda for approval for this event to be held at the Hitching Post. So we need to change the entire motion.
We're not going to make.
We're not going to make, you don't need it for the, for this to be held, then?
No.
No.
Okay.
That's correct.
So, so, yeah, it's a, to, at this point in time, the resolution is, is that the event's going to be moved to the rodeo grounds, and there's no need for any further motion or discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll take it.
Thank you.
All right. And now I'll come to this wonderful session called public, Call to the Public. I'd like to remind everyone that the call to the public is a courtesy, not required by law. It is time for the public to express requests, communications, comments, and suggestions. And coughs as well. Request to speak forms must have been completed and handed to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, the council cannot engage in a discussion on the issues presented, may respond to criticism, may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly, or place the matter on a future agenda for council discussion. There is a three-minute limit for each speaker. Stacy, do you want to speak again? Okay. Mr. Schroder.
I didn't know you missed me. George Schroder, 2444 West Virginia Street. I want to get my little, how can I apply to the city for my class, Dissidence 101? We got a lot of problems here. You know, I'm a professor and that. So how to piss people off without going to jail, right? We got so many problems in the city. I got more people moving into my neighborhood that are, you know, tattoos, biker idiots, drug idiots. My next door neighbor just moved hers in. Nobody's doing nothing about it. Police, nothing. Code, nothing. Code, that 2624, with a 30-year-old building that's just two lots, proceed with permits to finish this thing. It's been always illegal, and it never will be legal. We really need to be looking into this because this is going to stop. I don't need somebody playing God in my neighborhood. It's going to stop. Now, where's my America? I got rights. Nobody seems to give a crap about that, okay? My father died 47 years ago today. Very ominous. If you knew him, you'd understand how ominous it is. 6/6/1966, really. He wasn't a coward. He didn't look to religion to, you know, give him a free ride in life. This is crazy. It's sad. I ended up with a great family, great upbringing, really fine things in my life, many of which you people will never know about because you don't care. You don't strive for better. You say you do. It's on paper that you do, but you don't. We need to be given more to our school bands. We need to get these people out of my neighborhood. Look at them. See, I got to call county now because the city doesn't, they won't, they won't answer it. I called dispatch, and I asked the lady, how are you doing? How are you holding up mentally? Well, thank you, Mr. Schroder, for asking. Who does that? I do that. I think about people. I care. But when you put crap in my neighborhood, and you bend the rules, and do whatever you want to do just to piss me off, bad idea.
Andrea Meek.
Andre Meek, 1327 South Bel Air here in AJ. First off, I'd like to thank Councilman Heck, Councilman Soller for being on Nextdoor and bringing up the points of the problems we're having at Flatiron. Of course, you know, the problems, like you say, go much deeper than just addicts or whatever. It's an epidemic of homelessness, you know.
You know, rents are beyond reachable for all these people that, you know, live day by day in a trailer park, you know, with a thirty, forty-year-old trailer in there, and then they convert the trailer park into something else. And it's like, well, yeah, you can move your trailer. No, you can't. And so, these people are homeless. So, what's the answer? I don't have an answer. But you know what? You know what that means? That means that my neighborhood might get some people that are, you know, in some people's eyes, less than desirable, but may turn out to be just fine. And I have no problem with that, you know? I came from, grew up in a rough part of California, San Diego, and, you know, so I'm accepting of a lot of people. There are issues that won't be handled, dealt with, or cured, you know, in our meetings here. It's going to be some, you know, sea change of the way people are doing, you know, their, taking their property, developing it, totally their right to do, you know, asking what they can get as far as rent, which is totally their right to do. But a lot of people are getting shoved under the bus because it's like, okay, well, you know, you got thirty days to move, you know, sorry, but I'm going to make me some money. You know, I don't know the answer, because, you know, one side of me says, hey, you're free to make your money. You're free to do that. But another, another side of me says, you know, look at what you're doing to these people. You know, you're, you're not helping them. You're just kicking them out on the curb. And then, they become the city's problem. So, I don't have an answer, but I know we need one, and that's all I have to say.
Okay. Any comments from council? Okay.
Well, maybe I just can jump in saying, you know, that we're having that work session on the nineteenth, and it'd be an opportunity to learn a little bit about what the city is doing, and I hope that as many of you can come as possible.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to thank you for bringing that up. It is an issue not only for Apache Junction. It's nationwide, and we can get ideas and, and try to help these people find or get them off the street, you know? If you've been reading on Next Door, I put out how, how, one of the plans that you need to look at seriously, and that's going down that road of getting resources, trying to get them off the street, but then holding them at Conneble. So, I really appreciate you bringing that up, and we're working on it, and it's an ongoing process. Thank you.
Okay. That'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.